Good morning. We're calling this morning's meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I'll offer a motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Second?
Can you get a motion, a second, to approve the agenda? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. With that, we move on to the citizens to be heard. Anybody here that wants to be, speak on something that's not on the agenda? Any on the computer?
Mr. Chair, I had talked to a couple citizens that had a couple concerns, but I did not see them here this morning, so maybe they'll show up at a later meeting.
Okay, very good. Move on to the bills and vouchers, which is just coming around.
I'll move re-approve the bills and the vouchers.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to pay the bills and vouchers. All in favor?
Aye.
Approve the minutes from October the 3rd.
I move for approval of the minutes, October 3rd.
Got a motion to approve the minutes from October 3rd. And we got a second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
With that, we move on to the, oh, are you gonna, did Heather say anything to you yet, or haven't heard anything? Oh, we'll put that off then, and, or do you want to take your place? Okay. We'll move on to the request to approve accept bids for the Department of Motor Vehicle Department project. What was that?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I believe Dan Kleist from Gertz Construction.
He isn't here yet either, okay?
We are a little bit early, though, I mean...
Justin, you out there? He could be done with his meeting in a hurry. Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, how about Josh?
Oh, there's, there's.
Let's go back to Heather. Good morning, Heather. You're on.
We're a couple minutes early. Sorry, Representative. Yes. Hello. Good morning. I'm sending around my legislative update. These are just good to have. I have a couple more here if you want me to leave some for you guys to kind of have. It's nice because it's regionally specific. I think a lot of the updates that have been going out from the state have really been those big, broad things, but, um, yeah, so take a look at that. Do you want me to just give a overview or some updates? What would you like from me today?
Well, I can give an overview of what happened last year, I guess, and what's happening now, or what's, what's going on, I guess.
Sure. Um, and maybe a caveat to that, too, and anything that we can help you as we continue discussions for the needs of the area. Sure. Okay. Well, we wrapped up session in May. I served this year, every time we get elected, we sit on new seats and tables, and so one of the coolest things that I got to do this year was serve as the Vice Chair of the Children and Families Policy and Finance Committee, which the biggest thing that I think connected all of us together is the fact that that area oversees homelessness, food insecurities, and child welfare. And so one thing I learned, that I really started to dig into, is that Minnesota is only one of nine states that is state-supervised, county-ran when it comes to a lot of our child welfare. And as you probably know, ICWA, or the Indian Child Welfare Act, is something that was really meaningful to me, and we know that in Minnesota, we're number one in the nation for removal of Native American children, seventeen to one. That means seventeen Native American children are being removed to every one non-Native child. And so really spent a lot of time this year working on making sure that we get ICWA or MIFBA, the Minnesota Indian Family Preservation Act, really up and running and funded for our counties, so that we're doing what is best for our kids, because we really believe that if we do that just for the Native children, it's good for all kids, to be able to go to your family first, your community second, or somebody with a very foundational understanding of, of who you are. So that was a big thing, but then, one of the things that I've been doing is really digging into children's mental health. When we look at a lot of the areas of issues that we see, behavior or mental health issues, we really look at, we're in a service desert, is what I would call literally the western side of the state. And so we've been doing a lot of meetings with, you, you guys have some fantastic small work groups going on around mental health, around adult behavior health services, and so really trying to tap in to some of that, so much so that yesterday we brought the entire, well, we brought both in person, and we were able to stream the Human Services Policy Committee. We actually brought them all the way out here and heard testimony yesterday. It was a full room in here. I mean, you were bringing in extra chairs, which I think is really good, and I think that goes back to the fact that, one thing I learned serving in this role is that I can go all the way to St. Paul and do the very best to be a voice for this community, but taking my skills as a liaison, I just find it important to build those bridges so that they know all of you. Paul was there all day yesterday with us, and so I, I think the biggest thing, the biggest update, other than some of the things that we did, was that I really am working on those relationship-building skills and working, I would say, more with Clay County than I have in the past, because Human Services, you know, aligns so much with the seats that I sit at and the things that we're trying to do, and really trying to make Clay County a hub for children's mental health services that we know we need desperately in this We did a bunch of other really cool things. I think the biggest thing that I take pride in is the fact that we invested $100 million into shelter capital for prevention of homelessness, and we made sure that forty percent of that goes to greater Minnesota, because how many times do we see, we put all this money, and then it all funnels back into the cities, which then our kids and families funnel into the cities as well. And so I know that our community was able to have access to some of that. You know, Churches United is really growing some of their capacity to be able to support in our homelessness lens.
Any questions?
I'll make a comment if I may, especially about yesterday, and thank you so much for bringing the troops this way. It was nice, so we had Representative Fisher, who is chair, we had Representative Keel from Pope County, she's on the Republican, is she the lead, I believe?
Yep.
And then two other representatives from Elk River and White Bear Lake, I believe. And I thought the, and I appreciate all the staff. We must have had that early one, about twenty-five people, I think, eight staff probably from Clay County Social Services, but I think that discussion, my techy ways, and I don't know if you want to add anything, but what are the, what are the unique things of Clay County? So that, that reciprocity piece, I think the other thing that was very brought up by a lot of people is the reimbursement rates, and how low they are, and that inability to serve the people, because there just isn't the funding, whether it's from state or just the way insurances line up to service those people in needs. And then lastly, and I don't know if you want to touch on it, is the psychiatric residential treatment facility, that lack of care being, as you said, we're kind of a desert up here, and that all those children, when they need those higher acuity, acuity needs, needing to go to St. Cloud, or St. Peter, or other parts of the state, and being removed from their family's interdistance, rather than having more family involvement with that child as they're going through that phase of their life. So, anyway, thank you very much, and our dialogue over what really started about maybe two months ago seems to be getting more traction all the time.
Yeah, I, that's a great overview. I mean, I think, you said it correctly, we, so, when the kids who have the highest needs need services, they're driving like three hours away, and for them to be successful in that track, they need three times a week intensive family support. So then you have your families from our community driving three hours one way to go do this intensive therapy to come back, like, it's just not successful. And so, um, yeah, we're working on, it would be bonding, it would be a bonding ask for the facility, thinking like a sixteen-bed P R T F. I swear, I'm like, there's so many.
You did it.
Yeah. Not only just for Clay County, but then we would be serving the surrounding counties and stuff as well, because what happens is when our kids don't have a place to go, they end up in our juvenile detention centers, and we learned a lot about that yesterday. I think our juvenile detention center is doing a fantastic job, but that is not where these children need to be. So that is, I think, rising to the top as a priority when we start to go back, knowing that it's probably like, you know, four to five-year effort to really get that up and going.
All right, standard of meeting yesterday, too, or yesterday afternoon, and, I mean, I'm impressed that you brought that committee up here. That's very good, you know, and, but listening to all those people talking yesterday, you know, we probably think we're doing good at Clay County, but there's one more step we gotta take for those people that, that just don't have, for that last, that last step to, for those kids, we don't know what to do with, I guess, you know, and it's just, we need to do something there, and hopefully that your bonding bill will, or if you are gonna have a bonding bill, that will help out there.
We will have a bonding.
Very good.
(laughing).
I said that wrong. Okay. No, thank you very much for that meeting, that was very good. I was very, I was impressed with everybody coming forth and talking about, they all got problems, I mean, of course, that's why they were here, probably, but, uh, it was a good meeting, thank you very much.
And they gave us good solutions. I think that's one thing, too, is like, I'm bringing a lot of the chairs out here, you know, I had the Chair of Children and Family, Chair Pinto was out here, Chair Liebling, she's the Health Chair, we had Chair Fisher yesterday, we have Chair Horstein coming today for transportation because of a conversation we had, we have Chair Gomez coming for taxes next week, and Chair Howard coming for housing. And so my goal is to bring as many of the chairs out to our community, so that when they're making decisions, you know, at the end of session, then they've built relationships and have visibly seen and been in our community connecting with people, so hopefully that helps us come out better in the wash at the end of each session, then, instead of kind of always being overlooked or last options.
Yeah, it was just interesting, I mean, we had families, there was families there, a couple of families there talking about their children's, what they've been doing to try and get their children some help and stuff like that, so, everybody needs some help, I guess, so, very good.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Frank. Representative Keeler, I just, again, want to echo, thank you for bringing the meetings here so often. When you get to St. Paul, you're hearing the stories from all over the state, and I agree, I, I think the importance of us sharing our story, not only the successes but the challenges, is helpful as you make decisions in St. Paul. I think particularly what's frustrating from the government side of it is, is when you are on the western side of the state, it does seem like there are deserts in a multitude of ways, not only just the issues in which you talked about yesterday, but, for instance, folks needing to drive two and a half, three hours to get a driver's license appointment. You know, we have taken the stance in Clay County that, that we really want to help solve regional issues, that's, that's apparent by how we're looking at regional water plans and, and the regional juvenile center, but really understanding, because we are a large population center in western Minnesota, that, that, that's really the stance at which we need to take, and, and I'll echo the crisis bed component, that's a, that's a major issue all throughout the state, not only western Minnesota, but for children and for adults. I sit on the Lakeland Mental Health Center Board, and, and while we're doing our best to address so many critical needs in the mental health realm, that's really a gap. And Clay County has taken the stance that we understand that, you know, you talk about needing to drive three hours for these critical therapies, that's not only a family burden, but that's a staff burden for providers that are trying to do their best to, to serve the folks that are needing the care, and, and we've taken priority to make sure that kids are in schools and stay within the district, that they have the supports and the relationships built. So as we move forward with the bonding discussion, I just can't stress the importance of keeping folks as close to their supports as possible, and, and particularly if that's Clay County, we'll, we'll do our best to try to address that need, because there really is a gap of service there, and we can't think that sending someone to another state or six hours away is in any way helping their mental health needs.
It was crazy to me that we learned that when we send them out of state for services, we still like pay the bill, you know, and I just think that those investments should have to be here, and, you know, part of it, you all make it really easy for me to go back and say Clay County can do this, because I, I know that, I know that you're willing, I know that we're ready, I know that we have the staff. I mean, we've been talking for months with people that are ready to do this work, and that's also why I work so hard to be bipartisan in these efforts, because we know that that's this whole side of the state. I mean, it doesn't matter what side of the aisle we sit on, our kids can't suffer like this anymore, and so really making sure that that's why, you know, having Representative Keel here yesterday, not only as the lead Republican on that committee, but just as somebody whose community would need these resources, and driving forty-five minutes for them is obviously much better than the three, three and a half hours, so, working on that buy-in and relationship building, but, I mean, I do really think that we're gonna have a strong relationship moving forward, just with the new, the state is gonna create a new Children and Families Agency, and we want to be really, I, I kind of want to keep a close eye on how we build that, just to make sure that our counties aren't overlooked and our greater Minnesota individuals aren't overlooked as they build and hire for those positions in that agency as well.
And my final point is, I said this last week when Senator Kupchak and Representative Joy was, were here, but thanks also, I know we had an issue that bubbled up, a couple issues, last year, that I was able to get ahold of you right away and have you address, particularly with the fingerprinting issue. We had the Chair, or the Commissioner of DHS on a call within twenty-four hours, so thank you for being responsive to that, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Yeah, I mean, fingerprinting was, I mean, everybody was really upset about it, and we talk about a workforce shortage in, like, our childcare systems, our nursing homes, and so it was really, it was a really frustrating thing, but yeah, I mean, that's part of what I like to be able to do, too, is not only like write bills and pass things into law, right, but it's to be able to have a voice to make some of these adjustments that we need to make quickly.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All my information is on here, if you guys need to email me, we are in the interim, so my email responses are a little bit slower, because we work full-time jobs, too, but please email or reach out if you guys have anything, or if there's any projects that you want to get on the loop, knowing that when we go into this year as a policy year, so specifically in any of the areas that you guys have eyes on, if there's some policy barriers that you want us to look at, we go back into session February 12th. So by November or December would be the latest if we really want to look at any policy adjustments for any of those areas.
Well, thank you for your efforts this year.
Okay. Thanks.
One last, when is, what's the date on that housing, on your housing committee?
So today, we're doing transportation, and I think, we, I don't know who's helping set all that up. And then next Monday is housing, and then next Tuesday is taxes. Good?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, then, we move on to Dan there, request to approve the accept bids for the Department of Motor Vehicle Department project?
We have, Mr. Chair, maybe I could just tee this off real quick. As you recall, back in, I believe, September 12th, this board approved the, the ability to advertise for bids. This past Tuesday, October 10th, the, the committee and representatives from Gertz opened those bids here in these chambers. Over the last week, Dan and personnel from Gertz have gone through and verified, verified the low bidders, and subsequently have the, the bid package document that here's, here before. Yeah, we have Dan Kleist from Gertz Construction, we also have Ryan Weber from, from Klein McCarthy on, and he's gonna touch base a little bit about some of the slides that you have in your packet, and so with that, I'll turn it to Dan.
Okay, well, good morning to all the commissioners here, and like Steve said, we opened bids, we had a lot of bids come in, we had really good turnout, and they were within one percent of our estimate that we were last, the last estimate we submitted to the Commission for Review, those bids, the bids that came in were within one percent, so we're very happy about how that numbers turned out on that. The biggest difference probably between the estimate and, and what the bids were was that our estimate did not include sign, because that was kind of a late transition in the project, taking it from the withdrawal center and moving it into the DMV center. So we are getting some deducts off the withdrawal center to take that sign out of that project, but that was probably the, $25,000 was the difference between our estimate and the low bid, or the, the bids, so.
It's just a matter of us accepting this, uh...
So, Mr. Chair, yes, the, the plan today, or the request today, would be to accept the bid package before you. I would note that it does include all of our soft costs. It also includes the, the, the different approval that you made on the 12th of doing the site work and, and utility work, and so it's all, this is the entire project encompassed.
Okay, so we have a bid of $6,448,884.14. That's our final bid for the, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, thank you, I might just have a, a brief comment. We opened these bids last week, and one, there was a lot of bids, which I think always fares well to the people asking for the bids, so it, it was good to see, there was several areas in which we saw large savings that we were excited about, and, and particularly, I think due to the timing, maybe that's why we saw something like that, but I just want to speak for a second, because I think it's been elevated a little bit more in the community about the DMV project. I think there's some more people paying more attention to it, and maybe didn't really understand that we were putting it up there. I just wanted to talk a second about the site. We looked a long, long time throughout all of Morehead and Clay County for the best site to relocate this, when we learned that the mall facility was, was something we're no longer going to be at. And I just really want to say thank you to that committee that looked at all of the vacant buildings that were currently being advertised throughout Clay County and Morehead. I know they visited those sites, took into account the fact that we wanted to combine back together the Clay County facility, but not only, and not only the state, that would require the licensing and the, the drivers testing that oftentimes folks go with trailers and semis. We really were able to rule out a lot of those sites, because semis, and we're not going to be able to access that, we just didn't feel that it would help with the flow. A lot of the sites were six to ten times larger than the facility in which we need for this, and so just wanted to talk about the fact that building this on something that Clay County already owned, on a site that Clay County already has facilities, it will save the community substantial amount of dollars, particularly for operating and maintenance costs and staffing issues. So this is a really exciting step forward, because we will eventually phase in the state facility as well, but really feel like this is an opportunity to really meet the needs of our entire county with this site, and particularly, as it is a, a testing site, there'll be folks from all over Minnesota, regionally, that will be attending or driving to this site as well, so thanks for that.
Be good to get a good permanent place for the Motor Vehicle Department.
Mr. Chair, just to follow up on Commissioner Mojo's comments, I, I served on that site committee in looking around, and we did look at several different places within our, within this community, and even outside of this, outside of Morehead. And, you know, there's, you know, there can be some debate about spending $6 million on a building versus, you know, getting something that might be in existence, but just because a building is there and it's empty doesn't mean it's right for us, you know, and so we had to take all those things into consideration. There's some buildings, like Commissioner Mojo said, that were six times bigger than what we need. There were some that might have met our size, but they were aged, and by the time you purchase that and do all the things to bring it up to current, you're upwards to those dollar amounts, anyway. Some of the other comments I, that I've seen on social media says, well, why didn't you put this in south Morehead where all the growth is? Well, this isn't the Morehead facility, this is a Clay County facility. We have people coming here from all over Clay County that come into that DMV. They come from north, they come from south, and so if, if we wanted to have it centrally located, maybe we should have looked at Holly. You know, so, so just from that standpoint, I think there's a lot, a lot of issues that come up, and, and the fact of the matter is, is, is we're putting this facility on land that we already own. Any other facility that we would have gone to, it would have also eliminated that as an option for other businesses to come into this community, and it also would take that property off of our tax rolls, which would mean an additional cost to everybody else. So, so there's, there's an awful lot of factors that we weighed into this, and, and it's for those reasons I think we've got an excellent site. And by the way, the site location is actually very accessible to everywhere in Clay County. You know, with the new 34th Street corridor, you can come from I-94, and south, you can come straight on 34th Street, go up, you're not gonna worry about trains, you've got Highway 75 from the north, county, the county roads 18 and 26 from the east, Highway 10 from the east, and you can all just turn right up there, you won't wait for a train, if you, you know, you don't have to wait for a train in that process, so, I, it's, I think, I think we, we put an awful lot into that site selection, and I think it's gonna turn out to be a good one.
I have to agree with what you're saying there, it's just, it's a good place to put it, you know, it's a good centrally located with the counties, and thank the county, the committee for all the work they did on that, so, okay.
Mr. Chair, I might offer a motion to accept the bids for the Department of Motor Vehicle Department project in the amount of $6,448,884.14.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, to accept the bids, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I might, I might add, I also, Commissioner Ebergen and I also serve on a, on a building project that we're looking at for the dispatch center over in Fargo, and we just got, we just got preliminary numbers on what that could cost, and it was upwards of $1,000 a square foot. That's all in, that would include everything, furnitures and fixtures. This number here, we're probably looking at 640. So the, so the bids came in really good, in comparison to what were, and again, that was early, the one at the dispatch center was early, but it was still an indication of what it could have been. So I, that goes back, I think we did receive some favorable bids, so.
I think the timing of the bidding was really good timing, too, because this, this is a project that is, a lot of contractors are using to fill that last gap in the year, and also to get started in the new year, so it works out really well with a lot of people's schedules, so, it worked out. And I just want to say, you know, it's been really good to work with the committee that we worked with to get this project rolling quickly. Ryan's design team did a lot of work to put these drawings out in an expedited fashion, and, you know, there might be some holes out there in the plans, but to get it out within two months is, was a huge effort, and I want to appreciate what Ryan did and the, and the committee did to make that happen.
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback off of that, if I can, too, when, you know, when we, when we made this decision and selected our site, you know, there was an awful lot of other factors. there was an awful lot of other factors. The sooner we get that thing up and running, the sooner we stop paying rent. There's, so there was an awful lot of things that, that were advantageous here, and I think Ryan, they, our architects did a great job, and we put a lot of pressure on them.
We did.
We put a lot of pressure on them. We wanted to get the groundwork done and a lot of the stuff done. I don't want to go too far in the weeds here, but another project that we did on the same site, we ended up working through an awful lot of winter conditions, and winter conditions are, can be very expensive. And by, by them, you know, being able to speed this process up, I'm hopeful that we're going to see an awful lot of savings in those winter condition costs. And I think, Dan, you would agree with the ability to do that, that's going to help.
And I think, you know, that being said, I think we have a lot of that already in our numbers, in our allowances for our general conditions.
Right.
So, I mean, there's always, you never know what Mother Nature's going to bring us.
Right, right.
It could start next week, for all we know, but I think we're in a really good position to get that foundation put in. And then we got a little bit of a lull, waiting for some materials to catch up on us and keep it, get those, once we get them here, we'll start going vertical, but we're in a good position. So everything's turning out really, really, really good.
Good to hear that. Okay, well, we've got a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, very good. Thank you for your work.
Did Ryan have some?
Ryan, I think, Mr. Chair, Ryan?
Yeah, I, I am here, yeah. I just had, you know, a small presentation of the, of the floor plans and some renderings that we had for, you know, some, some media, you know, if you would like those. And just kind of to, if you want me to run through what we, what these slides are, I can certainly do that, too. But, yeah, we're, we're just happy to have been on the project, and, and thank you commissioners, and thank you Clay County for, for this project. It was a little bit of a tight squeeze to kind of push things, to get it done, this, and get it finished before, you know, the end of the, before winter came, but it, we felt like we did a pretty good job of getting that, everything that we need to, and, and, yeah, so we're very excited for you about this project.
Mr. Chair, I think we should see his...
Yeah, I was going to say, if you've got some slides, I appreciate seeing them.
Yeah, can share my screen or? Is everyone able to see that?
Okay, we got them now.
Okay. So here, I mean, this is the essential floor plan, just to give people an idea of how the new facility will function. There's, there are two, there's a primary entrance for the county DMV with queuing area and a lot of workstations, a lot of counters, transaction counters for people. We have a really nice waiting area here that we've talked a lot about in creating a comfortable space for people to wait. And then just functionality, lots of visibility, the back area over the counters, and then off to the side, the state testing facility. So eventually, there'll be a separate entrance for the state testing, for driver's license testing. There are small testing suite, and I don't have the site plan, but, you know, there is, there was definitely consideration for, like Commissioner mentioned, about the semis coming in for the semi testing, so that's accommodated. I think overall, this, this building functions very well for what you'd like to see. So we just have a couple, I have a couple of other views of what the project would look like. There's the exterior of what the DMV were proposing. It kind of takes into account some of the design features that are already part of the Clay County buildings, both the, the law enforcement center, as well as the detox facility next door, matching some of the brick and, and materials, aluminum panels. But it has its own identity as well. So I think it, it'll be a nice complement to those other buildings. Here's, here's what that will look like along with the detox facility, kind of looking off of 15th Avenue. Is it 50th Avenue or Street? Can't remember. So kind of looking from the south, north, to the two buildings, side by side, you can see there's, there are some elements that are similar in those two buildings, but they're not identical. And just a picture of the interior lobby as well. But, you know, one of the aspects we wanted to do was, was bring in some natural light into the space, giving people an opportunity to, to look out at the site rather than having to stare at the counters. So, you know, orienting people towards the windows and so forth, making it a more comfortable space for people as they're, as they're going through the process of getting their licenses and registrations and so forth. That's really it. If there's any other comments or questions, and anybody had about...
No, appreciate what you're showing us there, and hopefully we, we'll be in there next spring really early, so.
That's a little aggressive.
A little aggressive, a little aggressive, but I'm sure it'll be next fall sometime.
I think it'll be in the fall, yeah.
Yeah. Appreciate whatever you're doing there, Dan, and getting it moving.
You bet.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, one last thing, too, and I know we did a lot of comments, and we talked a little bit about the state being in there. They're, they're probably just under, I think they're just under, or just over 10% of the total square footage, or they're 1,000 feet, I think, 1,200 square feet of the, of the 10,000. And one of the things, one of, you know, when we talk about this cost, once they're finished with their other location that they're at, they're going to come in and be leasing from us. So it will be, it will also be revenue to us to help make that bond payment that we have to make for that facility. So that's just another aspect in the total operational cost. There's going to be some reimbursement by the state through rents that's going to help with that. I think that's, it's an important thing to remember, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I think we still have to vote on the motion.
I think we...
Did we vote? Oh, okay, we did, okay.
All right, well, thanks, everybody, and thanks for giving us the opportunity to work with you guys again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, Justin, we'll go into here. Purchase of a snow blower?
Yes, good morning. So I am here this morning to request approval to purchase a snow blower from McQueen Equipment. So this is a snow blower that mounts on the front of a front end loader. The last time we bought one was in 2013, so this would be replacing that unit. So in the wintertime, we use these things a lot. Last winter, we used them more than we probably ever have. And the unit is, we had a few different breakdowns in the snow blower last year, so I think it's time to replace it. So I would propose that we purchase this from McQueen, and it is off of the state bid for a purchase price of $210,512.50. I would then propose to sell the unit 139 on min bid with a reserve of $28,000.
You indicated you're going to need it a lot this year again?
I hope not. Best case is it would not get used, but...
Okay, very good. All right, we discussed this at the highway tracking and recommended replacing the unit, so.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the snow blower from McQueen Equipment for $210,512.50. And then also the approval to sell unit 139 on min bid with the reserve of $28,000.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, to approve the purchase of a snow blower? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm just going to pause for a minute and go back to customer, excuse me, citizens to be heard. Sir, you're in the back row there, did you have something to say, or you? Did you want to present something?
Yes.
Come forward here and identify yourself.
Good morning.
All right. Speak into the mic, let us know who you are.
My name is Jordan Lewandowski.
Jordan, you can sit down.
Feel comfortable.
I'm not here for a while.
Okay. We'll give you around three minutes, so go ahead.
I need about 300 seconds. My, I'm a father. I love being a father. And so I'm here today because I asked the Clay County to do an investigation on 10/27/2022. They did an investigation eight, 12 days later, because of everything that I was saying. They were, they were like, you got to get out, otherwise we're going to charge you with a crime. And I'm like, you got to charge me with a crime. So then I can get an attorney, and I can fight for my rights. My daughter was taken away more than 100 miles from the Fargo-Morehead area, and with, against, in violation of an existing, in violation of an existing decree binding by law, ordered by the Honorable Stephanie Hayden Judicial Referee presiding in that case. The file number is going to be 09-2020-DM, as in Don Marie, dash 00276. I have proof that she left with intent. I have proof that she is harboring our minor daughter. She's seven years old, and she'll be turning, she'll be turning eight on 10/27/2023. I've been going through a lot. I'm just asking for help. They did an investigation, they didn't put a missing persons report in. The investigation was done improperly, they didn't, they were investigating her for a felony. They called down to her and just took her word, and I had a bunch of evidence, I have witnesses. I seen my daughter two, I'm sorry, I seen my daughter two weeks before she left. I mean, I just got back on my feet after COVID. I was waiting for my money for over a year and a half, taxes, child support, and I don't care about money, I care about my kids. So that's why I'm here today. Sergeant Leenen did the report. Pam, I'm not sure of her name, Pam Foss, I believe, looked over the case and denied it the first time on 10/27/2022, and then on 10, on 11/08/2022, they finally did the report. They didn't even call down there to the Sheriff's League County Department and say, hey, can you verify that she's there? So we have evidence and proof that she's there. But they just called her and took her word for it, and then said unknown address. And I'm telling you, in here, I have rights, parenting rights, I have duties, we have duties. I wouldn't, if, if I did the same exact thing, if, we both have parenting time, we both have custody, this is not just a civil issue anymore, because I have a written decree already ordered by a judge. That doesn't mean, so if it's a civil matter, that could spark a criminal investigation if a law has been broken and a crime is being committed. My daughter has not talked to me in over a month. Last time, it was two months. She's seven years old, I take care of my oldest daughter. That parenting plan, and these are, sorry, Cass County ones, but the civil law can, decrees can go to federal law, I'm, my apologies, civil law can go to federal laws. I think I'm over my three minutes.
Okay. I'm just asking, what are you asking us to do for you?
I would like to have another investigation done properly. Yes, I, I want another investigation done on this matter. I want, I, I could call them and give them the evidence of they did a report, two counties did a report, two states, because of the laws, the common laws. They are refusing, the chief of police and the sheriff refused, well, the sheriff hasn't even looked at it, but he came out with the...
Why is the reason they're refusing you to reopen the case, or? No reason?
I mean, I, I haven't been accused of anything, I, I don't know. Honestly, I, I mean, it's right here, I have it sealed.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Lewandowski, was the divorce decree, understanding that was made in Cass County, is that correct?
Correct.
And so I think the concern from our, from our Sheriff's Department, from our attorney's office, is that it, it's a civil, civil issue, not for the state of Minnesota.
Why?
Mr. Lewandowski has asked for, how it could potentially become his, if there was a new charges, as he's mentioned, and, and both the county attorney's office and, and the Moore Police Department have looked at it and have not brought charges forward.
Okay. Yes. Sir, I, I think the...
She left the county of More, Clay. That's, that's why they had to...
I think the situation you're in, I, you're going to benefit from counsel.
And it gave...
You have an attorney?
The attorney, I applied for an attorney, the one, her name was Crystal Wolfrum. I applied at some legal aid in North Dakota, and they, she said I was a, do I, can, I don't swear, J, Jack, yeah. So, and she said I burned a bridge, and they weren't going to help me. And that was like way back before I even knew that, that there was a law that says she can't go that far with a minor across state lines, it's federal law.
Well, sir, we don't have any jurisdiction...
She lived in the Morehead...
Excuse me, sir, as a commission, we don't have any jurisdiction on this. We don't have any control over the decisions, the Morehead Police Department. We, there's an elected official over the Clay County Attorney's Office, and apparently, and Ms. Floss is, is one of his people, and the review's been made at that level. You would be well advised to get legal counsel and see if they can walk you through this and tell you what your, your options are, because we don't have the skills to do that, and we don't have any jurisdiction over this situation, as painful as it is, and as hard as it is for you. And I understand that, I'm a father. But you're, you're going to benefit from talking to legal counsel, sir.
And I've talked, I've spoken with them, they said this is a decree binding by law, and that you have a law over here, 609.26, that protects me no matter where this decree is from. But again, I don't, the sheriff won't even open up a new investigation. They won't even call down there and say, is she down there? I mean, that seems fishy. And again, if I did this, just because I have parenting time and custody, you guys would chase me, I know it. Look at me. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it immensely, God bless you.
Sir, I might also, you know, a lot can change in a year, and sometimes, no, listen, sometimes I've been in a position in life where I may have burned a bridge, but coming back to apologize for those actions, but also say, look, you know, it's, it's quite emotional right now for me, meaning you. And so if you can go to that legal counsel and just say, look, I, you know, I'm desperate, I have new information, I apologize for my actions of the past, but I need help. I'm hopeful that that will be fruitful for you, and in the meantime, I'm so sorry, because it is hard.
You put in a good word for me, and thank you for your time, God bless. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, request approval to replace ceiling tiles and add a ceiling net and gym at the West Central Regional Tunnel Center. Josh, you going to help us out in that area?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. I'm, yeah, I'm here seeking to get approval to replace our, our gymnasium ceiling, which is an aging ceiling. We're in the middle of a project, getting some, getting our estimates, getting some bids to do both the ceiling and the floor, but today, we're, we're hoping to get your approval to move forward with our, with the ceiling piece. And so we, we do have, over the course of the summer, we have been receiving bids, estimates, and so we, we do have an estimate that we're hoping to move forward with, and... And I don't know if, did that get to the packet or?
Well, the, the dollar amount did, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I can, uh, you know, this, this has been talked about with our member counties too on this project and, and, um, I think you'll, I think there was somewhere in the memo that it also stated that, that we had reserved $40,000 from previous revenues over expenditures from that facility, up to $40,000 to cover the floor and the ceiling. And, um, and at this point in time, the request is the, accept the quote from Great Plains ceiling for $25,241. And I think there, that certainly falls within line of what, I'm a little concerned about what the floor might end up being that could end up.
Well, yeah, the, well, the, we'll, we'll be within that 40.
Okay.
We, uh, with the bids we've had for the floor.
Okay.
We're gonna fall underneath the 40, so.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I would, uh, move approval of the, um, accept, accepting the quote from Great Plains ceiling.
Second.
A motion of second, any further discussion? Again, my question is, what, we got a low ceiling over there that the balls are?
So, a couple of things with the ceiling. The, it's in the gymnasium and the original design was a, was a ceiling tile, ceiling like this. And so that's kind of what we're, that's kind of what we're stuck with, I guess you'd say. And so the, the ceiling gets hit with projectiles, you know, when the youth are in there, they're kicking the ball, you know, and they're throwing basketballs. And over time, the structure, the grid structure has become compromised as the, as has the existing tiles. And so they started to fall over the last few years. The maintenance department has done a nice job kind of piecing the, and patching the ceiling together. But at this point, it's a safety concern, so, um, that's where we're at with it.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? You get a motion of second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Get it done. Okay, Cyber Security Awareness Month presentation. Roy?
Morning, Mr. Chair, morning Commissioners. Uh, today I'll be presenting and spreading information around and surrounding cybersecurity awareness and safety. Uh, each October is Cyber Security Awareness Month, as you may remember from the previous couple of years that we've been doing this. Um, yesterday, we kicked off an event. Um, sorry, get this presentation up here for you. Kicked off an email campaign. Uh, there's some training in there that everybody should have received. Um, as you've maybe seen in the hallways and different buildings, we've been distributing posters and flyers. Um, Information Services has been kind enough to also share these out on the digital signage uh, displays in each of the buildings as well. Uh, tomorrow, we will also have our first live training through Microsoft Teams. So if you're, if you have time to, to join that and one of the next couple, um, couple meetings here, there's one this week, um, and two next week. Definitely urge you to join one of those if you can and learn a few things from, from our staff presenting. Um, some of the, I just wanted to cover some of the protection layers we have here at Clay County. Um, due to the nature of security, I won't dive into too many details, but this is a few of the items I'm willing to share with what we do. Um, the main one being staff awareness, the verification. So if you receive an email or a phone call and you're just not sure, double check, confirm, you know, hang up, call back, just ensure that you are speaking to who, who they say they are. You know, corresponding with that email that is who they say they are as well. Um, so any of those emails that you're not sure on, um, we have a Fish Alert button within Outlook and Outlook Web Access, even your, your Outlook Mobile app that you can report these buttons or report these emails and that comes back to my staff, which gets reviewed daily and will get a, a clear notice or yes, this is a, a phishing attempt. Um, other strategies we take are multi-factor authentication, which all of you should be familiar with. Uh, we've been doing that the last few years. Um, there's gonna be a, a bigger push for that going forward, especially surrounding our, our law enforcement departments, attorneys, sheriffs, corrections, juvenile detention as well. Uh, the geo fencing, that, that's one where in our firewall, we, we essentially only allow things within the US or, you know, North America. You know, across seas, a lot of that internet traffic gets, gets blocked right at our firewall level. So that's a good layer of protection right there, just to stop like kind of the low hanging fruit. Um, you know, along with the spilling and, uh, filter, spam filtering and blocking or VPNs, that's important. All of our laptops should have VPNs on them as well. So that, that helps add another layer of protection. Uh, also utilizing, state of Minnesota has some services that, that we utilize for, for free and some paid as well that, um, help us protect our, our environment. Uh, just a couple examples here. Um, this is just last week's outbound web threats. Um, recent different categories here. So there's about 1,500 different threats that we've seen come from within our network going outbound. A, a lot of these are on our guest network, so people that bring in their phones, tablets, things pub, from the public or coming in on meetings with their, with their laptops, those will, those get blocked as well. Certain, certain bad malicious websites, things like that. Uh, on the reverse side, um, this is an example of last week's inbound threats. So there's about, oh, about, uh, 78, 79,000 uh, threats that just get blocked right at our firewall level and through the use of our VPN. So it's, it's very, very beneficial to us to have those in place and we, we see that daily.
What's a wildfire virus?
That's something that can, that can spread. There's a, spread rapidly. Um, there's some that kind of sit dormant for a little while. The wildfires, um, category, those can, those can kind of just hit, hit, hit really, really quickly and spread throughout an organization. Um, just some recent, recent events. Um, Oregon and Louisiana DMVs, they had a, a software bug where attackers got in and three and a half million clients' data was compromised. You know, their IDs, license permits, things like that. So, um, it, it kind of hits home when we have a, our own DMV. So it really kind of resonates with how do we protect? How does the state protect us? Um, August, there was a smaller county in Minnesota to the south of us. Um, it's still, still kind of an ongoing investigation, but they had, uh, client and agency data stolen as well, um, with, through a ransomware attack. Uh, they were able to get their data back, but it, it took a little over a month to get it back. So it's a, it's a long time to be, to not be at 100% uh, service level for your organization. Um, and you may have heard in the news too, the casinos out in Vegas, MGM and Caesars, uh, they both got socially engineered and compromised on a, a software exploit too. So, uh, Caesars ended up paying the ransom, $15 million, which is a lot of money, but to them, it's about a 0.1% drop in the bucket for them. But, uh, so they were able to recover a little bit quicker than MGM. Uh, I believe MGM was 10 days out, but they were able to restore everything in that timeframe without paying a ransom. Um, so we're, we're always striving to improve, um, catch up. I, I know at the AMC conference, some of you may have received the, what was it? The Security 101 packet from them. So trying to follow those guidelines with NACO and through the state and some of those organizations, AMC, Manquita, uh, try to align so we're not each, you know, doing our own thing. Try to streamline, um, so we're not reinventing the wheel here. Just, just following that, uh, patch management, as you heard in, in the presentation, a few of the agencies, just software vulnerabilities are what, what got them. But ultimately, number one, social engineering is by far the weakest link in any organization. So it's extremely important for staff training and ed, continuing education on that. Any, any questions?
So you're asking us not to turn our computers on?
Yeah, right. Better to be safe.
I do have to admit, I appreciate what you guys are doing. I mean, uh, I'm not very good at those computers. I'm glad you guys are doing what you can do.
Yeah, it's.
Preventing all, all that phishing and stuff like that.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of work for, for everybody involved. I mean, it's, it doesn't necessarily just fall on one department or one person. It's a, it's an organizational wide, uh, strategy that has to be. It's the only way we can protect, protect us, our data and our, our clients' data.
I hope that ever continues to the whole year and not just October, so.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Any further comments?
I just enjoy the game with Josh Lynn to see if she can catch.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's pretty fun, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Roy. Okay, now we're going to request the approval to MOU with the City of Moorhead in regard to a grant application for the Brian Justice Assistant Grant.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, you, uh, you put it right out there. Uh, the City of Moorhead is applying for, for this grant, uh, actually this week. Uh, part of, uh, part of that grant application is partnering with, with another, uh, either law enforcement agency or, uh, legal, uh, legal law, local jur, jurisdiction. Uh, and so the, uh, the, uh, MOU before you today would provide us roughly $4,883.75 should, uh, should that, uh, grant be given. Uh, this is a, a requirement of the grant process. Normally, a lot of times you'll see us coming to the board after the fact with an MOU. Uh, in this case, uh, it strengthens, uh, strengthens their grant application if they can show a partnership. Uh, and so the request, uh, here would be to accept this MOU. Uh, we did have to identify an area and where those funds could be allocated. Uh, we did put the Clay County Drug Court program. We have the ability to shift that. I mean, if you wanted to do something different or, uh, specialty courts, so we have a couple of those uh, and are talking about a third, uh, here at Clay County. But, uh, that is, uh, up to this of a board for consideration. That I'd yield for any questions.
Um, I think this is a, kind of a no-brainer, partnering, uh, towards this grant. And they've come through for, for decades, to my knowledge here. And I think the Drug Court is a good place to direct the funds. So I, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve this.
I'll second.
Yeah, a motion of second to approve the, agreeing to the grant application. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Looks like you're in a hurry for the next item. Break time. We'll take a short break. Uh, next thing on the agenda. Guess we're back on again. The last written offers used and use of eminent domain for the acquisition of necessary property rights in Clay County for the Morgan-Moorhead Metro Area Flood Risk Reduction Project. And it looks like we got, um, our Director Joel Paulson there, um, Eric, Eric and Chris McShane. Again, okay, go ahead. Joel, you gonna take her?
Yeah, thank, thank you Chairman Gross, appreciate it. Joel Paulson, Executive Director for the Metro Flood Diversion Authority. Um, we come before you today to, um, ask the board to exercise, um, some, some pretty amazing powers um, of eminent domain, uh, for the, for the good of the public. Uh, we understand, uh, how difficult it is to, um, take land from private citizens uh, and turn that over into public good. And we hope that, uh, we have proven to the board that we have put in significant due diligence in our effort to uh, work tirelessly, uh, to, to try to find a compromise deal with landowners. Um, unfortunately, there are a number of properties that we have not been able to find agreement with the private landowner. Um, and those, those are in your packet and before you today. In order to keep the project on schedule for permanent flood protection in 2027, um, we need to take action, um, now in order to ensure that we obtain all the property rights necessary. Uh, we do have permit, a number of permit conditions that require, uh, full acquisition of all the, uh, the, the impacted project uh, elements before we can operate the project. So that means all, everything needs to be, um, acquired by spring of 2027 in order to, uh, be operational and ready for, uh, a flood event. Um, so that's really what leads us here today. Um, backtracking that schedule, um, would require us to begin the process of eminent domain uh, for the parcels, uh, that are before you today. So I have with me, uh, Chris McShane, um, and Eric Dodds. I'll maybe turn it over to these folks, um, to explain the process, uh, a little bit more in detail.
Very good, thank you.
Morning Commissioners, Eric Dodds with A2S. Uh, pleasure to be here with you again today. As Joel noted, um, we are asking for this authorization. I think procedurally, what we were hoping to do is just give you a brief explanation of what we've done to date. Uh, we do have an executive session on the agenda where we can explain a little bit more details of the generation of the offer amounts. And then if there's questions in exec session, we can try to address those. And then coming out of executive session, Chris has a resolution that we would ask the board to approve, so. The other thing else I guess that I would add at this point is the Clay County and Moorhead did enter into a joint powers authority, the Minnesota Clay County, or, excuse me, Moorhead Clay County Joint Powers Authority. That group has been really tackling the, uh, effort of buying property rights for the project for several years now. Um, at the end of September, we did come to that board and ask them for sort of consideration of passing the torch, if you will. Uh, so on September 28th, the MCC JPA Board did pass a resolution. I think you saw that in your packet, basically asking for help from Clay County. Uh, we will be also going to Moorhead next week, asking them for similar action. Moorhead's action relates to properties in Wilken County. So with that, I guess I would pause to see if there's any questions. Otherwise, I think we'd like to go into exec session, if that's okay.
Okay. Chris, you have any to add or?
Uh, no Commissioner Gross, um, just through introduction, my name is Chris McShane. I'm an attorney at Anstich Fugil. Uh, I've been working with the Moorhead Clay County JPA, uh, and also the Minnesota side, the Cass County Joint Water Resource District on the right-of-way acquisition for the project.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I move we go into closed session per language on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to go into a closed session. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay. We'll go into a closed session of discussions further. All set to go? Okay. We're back in session again. Take the next item, Resolution 2023-20, requesting Clay County, Minnesota to utilize court action to acquire right-of-way.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I would, I would, before we, uh, move with, uh, with anything, I, I would just like to, uh, ask Eric or Joel or Chris, um, who are here to maybe give us a, a brief update on, on the processes that have taken place to date with these landowners.
Yeah, Commissioner Campbell, I can address that again, Eric Dodds. Uh, so in the, in your packet on page 48, there was a, a table that outlined some of the steps that we've completed to date. And maybe I'll just use that as a way to help answer the question. So first off, when we identify whether a property is impacted or not, there's a preliminary design done and that design identifies the parcels. Then there's survey work that's done to identify specifically the legal descriptions of the takings that are needed. Um, after that, survey work is done, we hire an appraiser. The appraiser contacts the property owner, gives them a right to, uh, follow through or, or be present when the appraiser does a site inspection. The appraiser establishes a market value. After that appraisal is completed, the appraisal goes to the MCC JPA Board for blessing of approving an offer of just compensation. Once that offer has been blessed, the offer is made to the property owner. And then we have professional right-of-way agents or land agents that are meeting with the property owners to present the offer amount, present the appraisal, communicate, negotiate with the property owner, sit down at the kitchen table, have all those communications. That work for the parcels in your. That work for the parcels in your packet here has been ongoing for months, in some cases, years. The flow easements that cover approximately 2,200 acres of land in your consideration here today, those flow easements were appraised at the end of 2021. And so property owners were presented their offers for the flow easements at the beginning of 2022. And here we are now, you know, many months, almost 18 months after that. A few of the other parcels where we have footprint takings, meaning lands needed for construction of the project, Southern Abankment Reach Four in particular. So those are lands where we need to acquire some land and fee title, where we need some temporary construction easements. Those appraisals have been ongoing over the last, I'll say, six months. And so those property owners had many communications with their land agents. Some of the appraisal information has just been completed, and I'd say, two months ago. And so those offers have been out to the property owners over the last couple of months. Negotiations have been ongoing since that time and communications with those owners were happening well before the appraisals were presented. So hopefully that provides a brief summary of the timeline and some of the processes that we've used.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. And so the actions that the MCC JPA Board, which is the Morehead Clay County Joint Powers Board, requested of this board today to move forward with this resolution is doing so because of the timeline that has been established by the needs of the Corps of Engineers to complete the project and have it operational within the timeframe that's been talked about. Is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner Campbell, that's also correct. In the cover memo, you may have noticed, the Corps of Engineers is actively working to finalize their designs. They're at 90% design position on Southern Abankment Reach Four. They intend to advertise and award construction bids next spring. And so they need us to deliver the property to them to be comfortable advertising for those bids. They would like to have all of that done as soon as possible. We've told them we can have this process completed by the end of March. And so you'll notice here on, again, that page 48, we've got a middle of March timeline, early March timeline, of when we're planning to have these actions completed. And that's all being driven by construction schedules. The goal of the entire project is to have the project flood-ready by the spring of 2027. The construction work on the Minnesota side is part of that overall plan to have the project be flood-ready in 2027.
As a matter of fact, part of the Minnesota DNR permit requires everything to be completed before it can be operational, right?
That's correct.
So even if we take this step that moves towards eminent domain, that doesn't mean that negotiations stop with these landowners either, does it?
No, it does not. And we've been trying to stress that point for a number of months. On the North Dakota side, your counterpart is the Cass County Joint Water Resource District. They've been working to secure property rights on the North Dakota side for a number of years. Just for example, there was, I would say, maybe 15 or 20 different eminent domain actions that had been started on the diversion channel. All of those have been settled before going through the entire court process. And so I share that as kind of a testament that we're serious, we want to continue negotiating. You know, Chris and his team are doing a good job getting ready if we have to go to trial. But our goal is to avoid that. And I think the proof is sort of in the pudding that that's been the case.
Mr. Chair, with that information presented, I would move Resolution 2023-20. It's a resolution to utilize court action to acquire right-of-way and real property interest for SC Four and SC Five, which is the description of the Corps Engineer projects and upstream mitigation area.
Second.
I noticed you mentioned 2023-20. I see it says O2 in our.
I think that was the MCC JPA resolution. This one is the Clay County's resolution.
Okay, so this is 23-20. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
If I may. This is not an awesome position to be in, particularly for someone who represents this area of Clay County. There are names of individuals and families on this list who have a deep history in Clay County, a deep history of contributing to Clay County being a vibrant place to live and to work and to farm. And my hope is that a fair agreement can be reached and negotiated through. A long time ago, when I first ran for this board, a lot of the folks that really supported me in that endeavor were residents that were affected by this project. And I had said from the beginning that I wanted to be a voice around the tables to represent the point of view that those folks had and really have come to this position, doing just that, being part of vital discussions. Joel and I served on the Governor's Task Force that really compromised and I felt represented and elevated the concerns of rural Clay County in this. And while it's not something, like I said earlier, that is a desirable position to be in, I really feel that there's been lots of opportunity to take into account the folks that are sacrificing a lot for the greater good, as said. This is a large project and my hope is, when complete, we'll continue to contribute to the vitality and the vibrancy of the region as a whole. But these are my neighbors and this is not a fun position to be in, as said earlier. But again, I hope that through continued conversation and negotiation, we can settle these issues for these families before it goes to, like I said, the courts. So again, this is not fun.
Mr. Chair, I just want to recognize Commissioner Mojo. I think those are well-said words. And you know, at times in this process over the last, we've been working on this since 2009 and there's been a lot of contentious moments between landowners and those who are advocating for the project. And I think it has come an awful long way in trying to really show these landowners that we do fully respect the history that they had there. Unfortunately, what came down to in this process is this was the best project that could protect the area and be permitted to do so. And so with that, I think we always need to recognize, even though we're asking to go into potential litigation on this, which is, I think it's norm in a lot of cases with projects. I think we need to recognize the sacrifices that those landowners have made in this process. And I think we'll continue to do that and we'll continue to. I think it's going to be the diversion authority's responsibility to be good partners as we move forward with, once these easements are established and to abide by and protect the rights that they still have within their abilities to use the land and the areas that are going to be available to them. So I really appreciate your words and I know the difficult position. We all represent areas and when we have to maybe make a decision that isn't of the best interest of our friends and neighbors, it's a tough one. It really is. And so I just wanted to point that out, so.
Okay, any more discussion? We're going to take a roll call vote on this?
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebinger? Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Kravenhoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo?
Yes, excuse me.
The motion passes.
Thanks for your time.
Good luck. Okay, with that, I guess we're going into a closed session again.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose that is advertised on the agenda.
Yeah, we got a motion, second closed session, all in favor?
Aye.
We're back in session again? Doing the next item or are we going to do them?
Yeah, so I guess I'm seeking approval. So recently, within the last month and a half, we've been made aware of the Holly MinDOT site on the east end of Holly, on the north side of Highway 10, has been offered to us to purchase. So I would be looking for approval to enter into negotiations with MinDOT to purchase this site for use for the highway department.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the negotiations set forth by the discussion in closed session for purchase of the property, allowing the authority for county engineer and county administrator to work through that.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve that Justin will negotiate for that property. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we go into committee reports. Dave, you want to start us off today?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 12th, myself and Commissioner Gross attended the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Meeting. Veterans Outreach Director David Stockdill at MSUM outlined a number of items that are going to take place during Veterans Week. I believe that's going to be November the 9th. Also had information discussing the reopening of our armory here in Morehead. Looks like they may be able to start moving back in in the winter and it'll be spring before they could get it open. We had a real interesting report from Kirk Cannon, our Veteran Service Officer for the county, and made me aware of something I did not know. Kirk picks up the slack when other counties have no Veteran Service Officer or have a new person who's not had an opportunity to be certified in some of the things he need to do. And he has been kind of carrying a lot of water for Becker County and for Wilken. And Wilken has also been covering Travis County on some of these things. So we know Kirk does a good job and we know he gets a lot of business just from here in Clay County. But he's had some extra burdens here picking up slack for other counties. So it made me aware, but I just want to share that with the rest of the commission. And here's a note, November 6th through the 12th, we are going to have operation green light going and the buildings in the county campus here will be lit up green. Later that day, I attended the Red River Regional Dispatch Center Board of Authority meeting. And we had an update on faculty site design by Brian Bergstrom, one of the architects. And it, as it works, we looked at costs on the building and we're about $3 million over what we estimated. It's going to be $15.59 million at this point. There was a discussion about some things to go back and try and bring that in. It will result in a discussion among our North Dakota partners, including some costs for Fargo and West Fargo. The cost for Morehead and for Clay County already locked in to the amounts we agreed on in the joint powers agreement. Hopefully, looking at the schedule, they should be able to start construction in the spring. They're going to have bids taken. And hopefully, with some changes on this from the architect, we can cut back on some of that overage. The facility will have 22 stations on the main floor and six training consoles, which is going to really facilitate us being able to have our own console, which has been an important point to us, particularly with our rural cities involved. We want to have that additional attention. And then we discussed a joint powers agreement, just a change in looking at the land purchase that we're doing, requiring a North Dakota and a Minnesota vote to move forward anytime the entities decide they want to purchase the dispatch center property from the city of Fargo. And that would be something that, if it's considered, be considered 20 to 50 years down the road. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First meeting was last Wednesday on the 11th. I had a finance committee meeting for the Clay County Historical and Cultural Society, pulling together a 2024 budget. Things are going well there. Our missions are continually going up, so we're moving in a positive direction. As proposed to the county, they had asked for a 2% increase in their budget for '24, but I think we'll have a balanced budget that looks healthy. Then on Friday, we're here with the University of Minnesota Extension. We've covered our 4-H educator positions and administrative positions within Clay County, but we still have an outstanding position that Randy Nelson had held for a number of years. It's the ag and horticultural position, which is now a .8. We had that MOA with them. And so that hiring is now beginning. We worked on a job description, which we had communications with one other board member, myself, Master Gardeners. And the key spots is meeting the needs, certainly in the master gardener area, toward communications. And then, as Randy did so well, that of plant identification and education, coordinating education, whether it's throughout the county. So there'll be, I think, one more meeting and then we'll be, applications will start coming in. Let's see, and then my last was yesterday afternoon. I spent with the encouragement of Representative Keeler, bringing again to have the hearing here in Morehead. It's been discussed thoroughly when she met with us earlier this morning. But again, I want to thank her for doing all that work and letting Clay County get some awareness of our needs in this area. So that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I attended the bid opening as part of the Finance Committee for the DMV that has been covered by this board's action earlier. Had a long discussion with the landowner and also rural business owner regarding a potential Ringdike levy and discussion with the process with Planning Commission, the county engineer and the watershed. And that concludes my reports.
Kevin?
All right, on the 10th, we had a highway tracking committee meeting. Talked a little bit about the Holly building that we addressed today. And also, we received notice that the North Broadway Bridge has been completely removed. And I believe there is going to be a presentation to the Fargo City Commission on October 30th regarding alignments and low bridge alternatives for replacing that bridge. We talked about grant opportunities for CASA 52 and 12, working on. working on alternatives, and we, letters of support for Saban and Saban Elwood Fire Departments. And then we did, we talked about the snowblower replacement that we acted on today. That same day, we had a diversion authority planning commission meeting, and the primary discussion there, there's been a lot of talk about the elevators that are out in the Horace area and the acquisition of those and the changing of that, and Horace would like to have, have that property given to them by, for, by the diversion authority for, I think it's a dollar. And so, one of the things that, that we were concerned about is what would be the future use on that, and of course, there's, it's still to be determined if they would be, if those elevators would be torn down, if they, if they were, there would be an expense to that. And then what they would do with that property after that, because it would be very valuable land. And so I brought up the fact that, that we, we need to protect ourselves in terms of our original, by the way, I think the diversion authority originally paid $1.2 million for that property. So, so we wanted to make sure that, that there was some sort of, at least I did, and through our planning commission, that there's some sort of a, in the event that they were to resell it, that there'd be a shared revenue that would come back to the diversion authority on that process. It kinda, I think it would, it would require an exception to our, our land's policy that we currently have. We, we have done some exceptions before, I think, going back to some of the organic farm issues that we had on this side of the river, there was some exceptions to that policy. So that, it's not finalized, but there was some significant conversation in that regard. And that, that was what most of that meeting was about. Also, on the 10th, I did, I also attended the DMV bids, and, and this room was full of contractors, and I think it was encouraging to see all of the interest amongst contractors to wanna help in, in doing projects in Moorehead and Clay County. On the 12th, I had the Red River Dispatch meeting. Dave covered that well. The, the one area that we will have, it will require an amendment to the joint powers agreement regarding the land issue. Dave mentioned that, and that will come back, and each, each entity will then have to vote to approve. I think that will be amendment number two to the original agreement. And when that, when they're ready to do that, we will have a presentation to this board explaining the, the reasons why. An interesting thing on that is the, on the, on the construction of the building, they, the, Brian Bergstrom mentioned that they're planning on using precast panels in that process. It's very similar to what we did in our corrections facility, and I asked him, I said, well, what's the timeframe, lead time on that? And, and he didn't seem to think that was an issue, and I, I told him, I said, well, we have a precast facility here in Clay County, and they're two years out. You know, the last I had heard, anyway, was they're, they were totally booked for the next two years out, so. So we'll see how that, how that goes, but anyway. And again, that's the one where their preliminary numbers, as Dave said, were $3 million more than they anticipated, and that's in that, it's like $1,000 a square foot.
You've got the soft costs on that, the putting dispatch consoles and, and some of the, some of the other equipment that's gonna go in there, I think, drives that number up, but still, even if you factor that in, we're, we can be pretty pleased with the DMV.
That concludes my report.
Okay, Tuesday, I went to the Highway Tracking Committee, which Kevin has already covered. Wednesday, I was at the Wild Rice Watershed District meeting. Just a routine meeting there. The least amount of permits I've ever seen, percent of there, only 13 permits there. They went through them pretty good. There were no opposition to any permits. The meeting went quickly. Other than that, it was just routine stuff. Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, again, Dave has covered that well. Kurt is doing a great job, I think, for the county, all the things that he has to cover, so. Compliments to him. Then the other thing, I was at yesterday's meeting with Minnesota House Human Services Policy Committee. Again, I guess, I guess we already discussed it this morning, but I was very impressed with the presentations that were given. But it shows that we really, there's a lot of work to be done on it, so. Whatever head or, she, she can get her bonding bill through or whatever she's planning, and I hope, hopefully, we can benefit from them and get something more going for our mental health situation here in the county. Other than that, I just wanna mention Heart of Clay thing tonight at 7:00 at the Marriott, if any of you interested in that. They have their annual meeting or presentation of their stuff. Also, if you haven't filled out the United Way campaign things, I guess I would have to say I was, I heard there was only 68 people contributed last year. I thought that was for 600 employees. I thought it was sort of disappointing, but hopefully, we can get that up this year. That's for me.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I participated in highway tracking, and I would just also reiterate after Commissioner Campbell's comments, of the three options for the North Broadway Bridge, our highway tracking commissioners have been clear that, that we support one of the three. From a cost standpoint, there's a limited amount of dollars that, that, that we've talked about bringing forward through MinDOT, but just to clear there. The 10th, also participated in the DMV bidding process opening. Again, thanks to the work that Gert's Construction and also, also Klein-McCarthy did to get us in, in October, and that was good. On the 11th, we had management, talked about open enrollment. We had a communications update from Jackie, 2024 budget, and also legislative priorities from specific departments and some of the needs that they're seeing. On the 11th, I met with Brian, Mr. Melton on a series of county issues. On the 12th, I met with Sheriff Empting on a series of county issues. That afternoon, I met with Nancy Hansen from the FN Extra and talked about our DMV project that was approved here today. Yesterday, I also participated in the Human Service Roundtable and also the committee session, and again, thanks to Representative Keeler for bringing the various legislative committees forward this, this summer and early fall. Just to note, we do have two upcoming meetings this week. We have a, our rural, our county rural cities meeting at the Holly Fire Hall on Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00, and also will be in Fergus Falls at our District Four meeting from 8:00 AM till noon. That concludes my report.
Okay, Jenny?
Mr. Chair, yesterday, our administrator sent out a letter to all of us about the policy platforms, the legislative priority items that were put forth by AMC, and, and certainly, all of them are very, very important to not only counties in Minnesota, but, but Clay County in particular. And I think our administrator asked to have some feedback regarding priorities for Clay County so that we can be unified in our terms of our ask. And, and just looking through this, I know we all have priorities, so I'm, I'm not trying to jump ahead of anybody else's priorities, but just wanted to provide our administrator with, with personal, where I, where I lie in those things, and if, if it kinda relates to where everyone else is, just helpful with that. In terms of the Environment Natural Resources Policy Committee, certainly, my priority within the, the items put forth, SCORE funding and the allocation of SCORE funding and how it trickles down from the general fund where it's not really supposed to be, but how it gets back to counties, that's, that's where my priority lies. Just the continuation of our story, that's something Clay County has really taken a strong voice and stepped to advocating for more funding there. And the general government, personally, I'm serving on the Tax Forfeiture Work Group, and, and I know that will be something that, once we have more guidance and more information, we can really grasp what the, the true cost for counties will be. But, you know, cybersecurity, based on our presentation earlier, 3.5 million is not just a drop in the bucket to counties like it may be casinos in Nevada. So tax forfeiture and cybersecurity are up there with my priorities in that one. Really feel like we have done a great job. Our staff does a wonderful job utilizing what the resources they have for, for election funding. Not that that's not any less of a priority, but just from what I see Clay County's needs are. Public service, public health and human services is definitely a tricky one, one that we see a large, large, a need on our budget. The mental health, high acuity needs, addressing the, the gap statewide for the mental health continuum of care, that, that is an enormous one that we need to continue to use our voices strongly for. And then the modernization of the, the human systems services. You know, those, those are not just a challenge for human services, but really a challenge for all of the governmental agencies right now, particularly because there are major staffing shortages. So that is something that I put a high priority on. Public safety, I'm gonna have to just divert to our Commissioner Ebinger on. You know, I talked a little bit about the continuum of care currently. Obviously, we know that community services is a priority, but I did see all of those as high, high needs. I'm hoping that we're able to address some of those with some of the public safety funding, but that's an area that all of them continue to be major needs. And then in the terms of transportation and infrastructure, bonding projects is the highest priority in my, in my views. It is not hard to see, when you look at our budget, that the cost of repairs and projects quickly outpaces the funds in which we have to spend to fix those. And so, making sure that we continue to push bonding projects and have the state approve local bonding projects is where my priorities lie.
Okay. Mike, you have anything?
Nothing from the county attorney's office, this is more yet.
Darren? Jackie's got something.
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I would just wanna make sure that Commissioner, Commissioner Mojo shared her thoughts. I just wanted to get the feeling, is that the opinion of the full board at this point? Or is there any?
I, I'd like to interject something on that. I also agree the SCORE funding is very important. And another rabbit hole we seem to have a lot of money going down is in the emergency communication network. The 911 fees, I've talked to Representative Joy, and he's very interested in this. He cannot get any answer out of finance or the state on where those monies go. And I know there's a great deal of money that's been allocated for certain uses, and when it isn't used, it has gone back into reserves, as, as far as I can tell, where it's earmarked for emergency communication, but not, it has to be approved for further use. He can't get an answer on how much money is involved in that. But right now, as we've seen with our continual working with the, the rural cities and with Morehead, wanting us to assume the position that Cass County has with our partners in North Dakota side, and take the funds that come from the state and don't distribute them to Morehead, and then figure out what's owed from the smaller cities. They'd like us to just pay the bills. And we can't do that because, unlike North Dakota, we don't get money from the state that basically covers the majority of our operational costs on Minnesota's side. And a lot of that money has to come out of the levy, as ongoing operational costs. We need to look not only at getting updated for next generation 911 and not looking at replacement of communications equipment. We need to look at getting an adequate share of the 911 funds that are being paid right now, or if they, we can identify that those monies are not adequate to increase 911 funding in order to, to get money to the PSAPS, to the dispatch centers in the state, to help with ongoing operation. So I think that's a priority that's, is important.
Kevin?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would agree with that on the public safety side. I, you know, it, it's, it's so odd to me that, that we have 911 fees. It's, it's almost identical to the solid waste management fee that's in SCORE, where they take this money in and then they find other things to use it for, than the name that it's designated for to begin with. You know, so I think it's important that we still advocate for the SCORE funding, if it's gonna be, if they're gonna have a solid waste management tax, it should go towards solid waste management. And certainly, SCORE funding does that through recycling abilities. And then, and then in terms of the dispatch, I think it's, it's really important that, you know, and I think it's, a study on that needs to happen. How many 91, what are the dollar amounts of 911 fees that come out of Clay County, including 701 phone numbers that live in, in Morehead, such as myself? That those fees and where they go, and then, you know, proportionally, what comes back. Obviously, there's infrastructures needs that still need to happen statewide, but to, to help fund our, our regional dispatch center, which then would in turn benefit our Hollies and Barnesvilles and Dilwurst and all these areas that we have to have these, these collective agreements with to help pay for that. This would be a real benefit on, on behalf of all those communities. In terms of transportation, I, you know, I, I do believe that the last legislation, last legislative session was very friendly to transportation, to the point where in our policy committees through transportation, you know, there, there isn't a whole lot new right now moving forward in that area, other than the fact that there's an awful lot of discussion regarding EV vehicles, the electronic vehicles, and how, and how is the state, and for that matter, the country, gonna deal with infrastructure moving forward to be able to handle that demand on our, on our whole system? It's, that's a very complicated issue that's gonna be moving forward and have to be followed, but. So I think, other than that, I think the other things that Commissioner Mojo talked about, I would, I'd be in agreement with those as well.
I think we have to encourage, on mental health, I mean, Representative Keeler talked about bonding bill, you know, I think we have to be ready to present something. You know, I know we've been talking about putting up a building or something for the housing 16 bed or whatever it may be, you know, but we may, I think we need to be ready to present what kind of money we need for the county.
Well, I, you know, and again, I, I agree with that to some degree. I, I don't know that, I don't know that bricks and mortar are gonna be our answer for mental health issues, as opposed to what's, what sort of help we can provide to, you know, deal with individuals' problems that put them in a position.
Well, I think this is a question brought mostly forward, that after they've gone through all the departments or whatever, social services, what have you, that we have here in the county, what do you do with them next, you know, after they get to be, I don't know, over 18 years old? You know, what do you do with them then, and stuff like that? We have to come up with some sort of way. Paul, you have some comment?
Yeah, just a comment on that. So, thank you, Commissioner Mojo, for that. I, I do agree with, I'm in support of all those things you tied about back to the mental health. You know, my area was human, human services. I wanna thank both you and, and Steve for bringing in our legislators over the last two meetings. I don't know if you do that every year, but it's good for that update so we can keep moving. And yesterday, with Health and Human Services, we had Angie, is that how you say it? You know, from AMC joining our discussions yesterday. But to, to the point, it's about a mental health continuum, and these PSAPS, if you will, are a critical piece of that. And knowing, you know, that there's this void in, in the Northwest in particular, I mean, we're the hub, and, and I just think with our hospitals here and all the psychiatric care and the chance of helping develop young minds that need help, is just a real high priority. So I'm glad Representative Keeler is wanting to take this on, and, and I know in my, my committees having to do with general's mental health, we have a very... we have a very engaged group at Clay County in our social services that I think they're doing a fantastic job. They're very well in tune with staying in touch with her, you know. And what I hear yesterday and I felt today, this is really bipartisan. And that makes me really happy, because then we have that opportunity to create something on, to both parts. So with that, I just wanted to mention those things.
Your turn.